...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is June 23rd, can I have a roll call please?
Larry?
Here.
Aaron Meyer?
Here.
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 The minutes of the May 28th of our board meeting and the June 29th intergovernmental meeting. Any additions, corrections, additions? One motion is ordered to vote. So move second. There's a motion, second. Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron or Meyer? Yes.
Substate.
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Um, the company total tax income received since the last meeting, five hundred fifty eight thousand seven hundred twenty dollars and cents. As you will see, the real estate and the taxes are coming in nicely. That's all.
Anyone from the audience that wishes to just vote? If that kind of administration just think.
Uh, we're looking at an intergovernmental agreement concerning the municipal aggregation of electrical supply. Uh, we're now up for our renewal. This is going to be for three years. Um, as everybody knows, the commo medicine rates for production are going up. Uh, so we're hoping we can keep ourselves below the market rate of just over seventy cents a kilowatt hour. Uh, right now, we're at about four cents a kilowatt hour, just about, well, just shy of five per kilowatt hour, so. Um, so we've got to go back out for competitive bid. If it turns out that the competitive bid process is higher than, or is higher than commed, we would default to the commed rate for one year. We've got to make a contract for one year, so. Um, so I make a motion extending the intergovernmental agreement for municipal aggregation of electrical supply for up to three or more years.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, nor was it second. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Meyer? Yes.
Yes. Uh, the next item has to do with our ordinance concerning prevailing wage for the 2014-2015 year. This is required by state law, and we've done this every year, so, um, it's nothing new to what we've done before. So I'll make a motion establishing the ordinance.
What?
No?
Motion for what?
Say that again.
What we're letting?
Uh, concerning, uh, establishing the prevailing wage for the fiscal year 2014-2015.
Seven.
There's a motion on the floor, nor was it second. Any questions? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Meyer? Yes.
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 How about answer report? Public buildings and properties, parks and recreation, question you in?
Yes, uh, Weldonstad Park, we haven't had any weather to do anything. I, I think we're probably going to shoot for the fall again, uh, before we do anything. I think the baseball season's going to be over in a couple of weeks, I would think, you know?
Well, they got a limestone down there, and we graded it and everything on the two ballparks. We've been doing the mowing and spraying a bunch of weeds and stuff, but anything more than that, no. But they've been out there, they've practiced on it and played on it, so.
Yeah, we'll take it off the deck till fall, and then we'll look at maybe seeding some outfield or something like that.
Okay.
You know, um, not that now isn't the time to seed with all the rain coming down, but it'll all wash off for sure.
Fireman's Park scoreboard update, do we have anything on commed?
Long story short, I'm working, I have a phone call in to Kenny. Um, we were informed that commed will, um, even though they quoted us a, a price to pull the last three legs from the, from the pole, transform it to the boxes, they will not do that. I have to pull it from the box to the base of the pole. Um, I thought I would get that done today, at least, you know, get the parts sorted and everything going, but, uh, we had a couple of issues going on.
Yeah.
But that, I wouldn't think it would, according to, you know, Bobby talked to them, they said the minute we get it run, within 24 hours, they would be here, so, possibly by the end of the week.
Now, is their fee gone now, or is it still, what's that?
We, it's free now.
Oh, they did?
The forty-three hundred that we were going to pay, got back.
Okay.
So now that they shouldn't bark?
Yeah.
No, don't bark yet. I don't know, the problem is, by the time all this work gets done, from the end of the baseball season, then.
Right.
You get high.
Yeah, but like I said, as, as we all know, the scenario has been is, is we had this all set up, the person retired that we had it set up, set up with, once she retired, we called commed, finally tell them already, nobody has idea what we're talking about, there's no documentation.
Right.
And then since that time, we've been informed and misinformed of what to do and how to do it since that time. But the trade-off is, I guess, we're saving four thousand dollars.
Well, we do have to buy the kit. I have no idea what they're going to pay.
And that's not going to be cheap.
For our labor's free, technically free.
And the other thing is too, that light pole on Fairway Drive that the guy met me out there, was shown, um, they have not showed up or anything, so.
Does anybody on that first street, does anybody know if that was fixed, the one that I, I looked at? You guys may not know about that.
On First Street?
I'm on the side. No, you didn't know about it. It was the box that was leaning over, and I went out.
Oh, I bet you're in a light.
No, this is a, it was.
Uh, that was on, that wasn't on Fur, is it?
Yeah, the commed called an emergency work team on Friday for repair of the box. I don't know if they've been out there, but they did call an emergency.
Have you, you know, I was having a fur. Fur, and I, I did see him out there, go over here, so maybe he's going to, okay, thank you.
Yeah, as far as the scoreboards, you know, we apologize, but we've been at the mercy of commed, so.
Well, they've been still using them. We've given them the generators and, you know, it probably hasn't been, um, the most user-friendly or rather going as, in the switch, but they have been able to use them.
Right. Okay.
Uh, 625 Dixie Highway project, as everyone can see, uh, work is being, uh, done, or they're working on it as we speak this week, and, uh, is the roof complete?
Not, not yet, they, they fly some time yet.
Okay.
So they had a color issue, and it's been resolved.
Got to go with brown?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The back, the back of the building is different color.
Okay.
So we have to paint the manser brown. I have my manser on there.
On the drive-through?
Yeah.
I wonder who's doing that. I was looking at the one that I thought was going. Jeff?
Jeff.
Okay, but, uh, you know.
We have a Saturday morning work party, right? I have to trust people.
Officer Byrne is still.
Just a bucket.
Are you going to go in there?
Yeah. Okay, you're going to leave that?
Right.
They're going to leave the painting party here?
Sure, I'll leave it, officer Burke, it will get done.
And, okay. The deadline for completion on the remodeling is September 15th. We're hoping to, after that, order our furnishings, technology, and full system, and hopefully be in there on November 1st.
There's a couple of things going on there, there was some damage damage around the tile and the best of both, we had our great flood, pipe froze back last winter, the contractors are in, and we close that surrounding tile, it's only about fifty square feet. I don't have a price on that yet, and then what our bid did not include is replacing the drop ceiling in the driveway and the lady, which we're going to have a proposal for, to replace that. That's the secret.
Uh, we need to make a payment in the amount of five thousand dollars to JDK Construction for demo, concrete removal, and plumbing. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to make the payment in the amount of five thousand dollars to JDK Construction for demo, cement removal, and plumbing. Second.
There's a motion on the floor, nor was it second. Any questions? Alex, roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Coleman?
No.
Burrows?
Yes.
Meyer? Yes.
Yes. That ends my report.
Planning, building, and zoning committee trustee, Aaron Hinchcliffe, trustee Williams.
Okay, building department monthly report is enclosed for your review. Uh, update on status of old downtown buildings, I'm going to refer this to Bob or Mr. President.
I forgot to do it today, but I was going to ask Bob today to direct a letter to Mr. Bookmeyer to summarize our last discussion and put a deadline on it, and if not, we will take action on the Bookmeyer building.
Looks like they've been working in there.
Oh, they have. I have a straight.
I saw, what was it, Saturday? Friday or Saturday?
They were supposed to do us something, right?
They were supposed to follow up with us, and then we asked them, can we get back to them within two weeks, which we were past that date, and I haven't seen any action whatsoever. So we would follow it up, basically reminding him of what we discussed, and see if we could put a deadline on it. And like I said, what we asked on that particular building was at least to clean up the property and to make the exterior of the building look reasonable without the boarding and those and that, and fix the one area that needed to be done.
Okay. What about the Wayne Wood?
That, we could have a discussion with an architect, we happened to run into the architect that's handling that building, he is in fact drawing up plans for that building, so at that particular point in time, we asked the architect if he felt that he needed to call, uh, the actual owner of the building, he said no, because there actually isn't progress taking place in the building. So right now, we decided that we were not going to call him, since there was progress taking place as far as the architect.
Did he say he was going to keep, try to keep the old structure, or is he planning on putting a new building in there?
It's my understanding, uh, from previous conversations and from the architect, yes, in fact, they, there's an idea out there of where the most, call it damaged section is, which is basically a warehouse or a storage building, they, there's an idea out there of leaving it open, but then having it, the backside open up into like a garden area or something like that, which at that time sounded like a very appealing idea, which we told them, they asked Bob and I our opinion whether he should do that or do something different, close it up, and we thought it was a very good idea, because then he could have, uh, for instance, um, antiques one day that, which could open up in the, into the backyard, he could have it maybe for a small wedding, if he wanted to, you know, rent that parked out, open up in the backyard, or a consignment shop. Uh, there is some discussion taking place now about our fair possibility on Reed Street, which maybe could spill over onto Bill, and like, we've been trying to inform you all along, or there has been considerable discussion lately about that area, which we're trying to deal with and, and work with, and there's going to be more discussion later today, as you can tell in the agenda.
Okay. Uh, result of the Route 394, Route 1 open house at Glen Woody Golf Course, I know that a bunch of us, uh, were there, you know, in different sessions and so forth. Uh, do you want to give it a?
You were there? What did you think? It was just basically information gathering at this point, there's no, they didn't throw a plan on the wall and ask you to react to it, they were asking for our ideas and opinions. And it's funny, because at one of the tables, Greg and I wrote down the same thing, and Scott got something else exactly the opposite, if you remember it.
Yeah.
So there are lots of opinions and views out there, and, uh, it was just basically, I, I can't do it all I can say, but there was any news there. They did have a slide showing the golf course is being vacated, Scott caught it, I didn't, and then now we have that slide changed for the second round, here is again at six thirty. But I don't know where they got that information, that if their golf course is vacated, I could.
Yeah, I'm sitting there watching the slides, and I see, you know, Cardinal Creek vacated.
Yeah.
And I lean over to Greg, I said, "Did you see that?" He said, "No." So he went up right away and, and had it corrected, you know, that it's still alive and, and thriving, and, you know, it seemed like these last couple of days ago, of course, is, you know, there's been quite a bit of play, it seems like, so, it's not vacated. But, uh, do you guys want to add anything to it, you know?
Just that a lot of it was basically, uh, survey gathering from, from the attendees, to see what we would like in the future along Route 1, is basically what it was, it wasn't really to give us information, it was good information, us to them, so, and that's the way I would summarize it.
I was kind of surprised that they did not, they did not use any of IDOT's prior investigation on the Route 1394 floor at all. They didn't even, weren't even aware that, that IDOT conducted that investigation a good five, six years ago.
Well, the one good thing about it is, Bob caught it right off the bat, they didn't know about a bypass study that was on May 2000.
Yeah.
So Bob presented them, that, that what the, what the study gave, let them make a copy and give it back to us, and they did, as you were there, they did mention it in that meeting, that now at least their analogy in effect that that study was done, so I think that's a good idea. And when I say bypass, truck bypass, not necessarily bypass, emphasize a truck bypass, yeah, trucks.
Okay, um, land planning grant update, um, Phil has been advised that it is going to receive thirty-nine thousand dollar grant, uh, but we have not seen that, uh, grant paperwork yet? Okay, and this, okay.
Three in a week, situation.
And that's for the land planning grant. Um, and that ends the report?
Public safety trustee Coleman.
Yeah, case department, mostly report is included for your review, uh, also code enforcement must be reported included. Uh, nothing on mix all this, this time. Uh, results of the bike rodeo to be provided by the chief. Chief, what's up to date?
We had a total of thirty-eight participants, all the way from the ages of two up to thirteen. There was a lot of first place winners in a lot of the categories there. Uh, I can see that the parents have been vigilant in teaching their kids bicycle safety, because they all did very well. Um, gave away two bikes, the boys' bike winner was Damichi Marinopolis, and the girls' bike was won by Maddie Emerson. And hopefully next year, we'll have another successful event, and gave away a lot of prizes, and we had a nice day for it this time.
Thank you, chief. Uh, staff from the school district, fire district, police, and public works departments hold a joint meeting on crisis management in schools. This meeting was held in review of all the roles and responsibilities of agencies, plays where they, there is a crisis involving one or all of the schools. It was a very informative and worthwhile review, uh, but that's about all we can say about it. Uh, chief, I've got a question. Why wasn't I informed of this?
Of what, the meeting?
Yeah. I'm public safety chair.
We had at the last board meeting, we talked about it.
When was the meet?
The date, uh, was that in May? The, uh, last meeting in May, or the first one?
The crisis management meeting, I think it was June 4th.
The meeting was, and we talked about it, and then it's in one of my reports there. That's when it's held, like, at ten AM.
I, I just have a problem understanding this. I'm supposed to be public safety chairman, and, uh, we have these meetings, I don't even find out about them?
Well, that, I mean, this meeting was, is.
I'm going to, chief.
This meeting is, was designed for staff to talk about their crisis plan. This is, this is the, the meeting that the school district requests, because they're, um, by, by statute, they have to have these meetings, and we sign off on these papers that review their crisis plans. But if I forgot to tell you about it, I'm pretty sure I did, but I'll check back on my records, if I did, I apologize, I keep you informed as, but everything that I can.
I see, I see. Okay, um, mosquito abatement update. Buddy?
Um, well, I can say all the like you said, uh, before all the larva sighting is done, we have been spraying every Thursday night, uh, probably from dusk till right around midnight, um, you can plan on seeing them. This last Thursday, of course, he didn't spray it because of the rain, but he did spray on Friday. Um, before the Fourth of July, we will be spraying, what did I say, Bob, on Tuesday night and the lightning?
Thursday and Thursday.
And Thursday night, so you're going to get two sprays in, um, in the week. But everything, I think we're doing pretty well around here, and I haven't noticed too many mosquitoes. I mean, we're getting good feedback, and that's where we're at.
Okay. Uh, any questions to the chief or myself?
Uh, one question, buddy, one did, who's doing the spraying now?
I have, um, Nick and Steven are, are rotating.
Rotating?
Yes.
Are you doing any of the spraying, or just the two of them?
No, I stepped down from that job task.
Okay.
Also, buddy, uh, Thursday night, is that during the fourth?
Yes.
That's advisable?
Well, Ron, the chemical that they use around it is really, it's, it's an unnatural chemical to begin with, and they, um, they don't go through the park, I mean, they'll go around it, and then when everything is shut down, um, they will go through the park, you know, around the perimeter of it.
That's the third. So they, they move town when we're all in the park, and then when the park closes at midnight, then somehow it.
I see.
I'm not going to smoke you.
Just asking. Okay. Any questions to the chief or myself? That completes my report.
Of course, committee trustee Forrest.
Water department and sewer department monthly reports are enclosed for your review. Uh, variable speed drive installation at the booster station, buddy?
They are installed, they are running to the point to where they're ramping up and ramping down. Um, these last three weeks, we've been having all sorts of, um, other issues, and I have Kemp and the electricians, they'll be here for the full startup, I mean, as far as the other reprogramming, but as far as the nature of the beasts, like I said, they're doing just what they're supposed to do. Now, you know, uh, yeah, in a way, they're doing like, what the slow starts did, but also, in a slow start, you didn't have the, um, the luxury of the motor ramping itself down, which could also cause a hydraulic hammer. Now, you got the best of both worlds, but, um, I'm very happy with what they did.
Water tower overflow?
Not happy about that. I could, okay, um, I'm not sure how this, how it happened, the water tower overflowing. I can tell you why it happened, um, but still, the cause of it is, is yet to be determined. I don't know if it was from commed, but, um, with a power glitch, I don't know, uh, if a storm did something and caused a glitch, but I can tell you this, up at the booster station, the one we just talked about with the variable drives, there's a digital pressure gauge. That thing flatlined. Now, you understand how our skater system is, it's set up that when it goes to, reaches a certain pressure point, it doesn't matter, it's DEFCON four, all pumps kick on, and it will not shut off until it reaches that pressure point. Well, that pressure gauge was flatlined, and by the time we got out there, or, um, anything, it had overflowed the tower. And I went back on Friday night, I was in here, actually probably around four o'clock in the morning, got everything, uh, what I thought was straightened back up, everything reset, running fine, properly, ran all day long, Saturday night, boom, same thing, you know, it overflows again. I go in there, it's flatlined, I spent all day on Saturday messing around with it, um, making sure everything was rebooted, all alarms, I even went as far as looking for an open in the wire, thinking that maybe when the electrician was there, he, um, you know, pulled it apart or something. I went through, um, the twenty-four volt where it's a step-down, I checked all of that out, uh, reset everything, and it's run fine ever since. I don't have an answer for it.
Is that an analog signal back to the scale?
Yes, that's right there in the panel.
Do we have, do we have any, uh, digital contact coming back out?
I believe.
Indicating high-high, which would shut all the pumps down?
Yeah, that, ex, you.
All of that's in the system, and we still have an overflow?
That, it would, yeah, like I said, it, it locked the communication out. Also, all it knew was that, um, it was, like I said, flatlined, low pressure, no pressure through the whole north end of town. And then pumps kicked on, I mean, they did what they were supposed to do. So I was, um, online with Kemp Synergy, like I said, there's some programming and some issues there, you know, answers that they haven't gotten back to me and given me the answers for, but I know they've been going through the whole thing.
And when are they coming in?
I'm waiting for, I thought I was going to get a phone call from Warren today, I know he was online working on it. Um, I would, I will be calling him tomorrow morning, because I have a few other questions.
But we have a high-high limit?
Yes, Brian, there's, you know what?
But not analog, I'm talking.
No, we should have gotten two, two different alarms. Number one, I should have gotten an alarm, low pressure, I also should have gotten the alarm that said high water at the top.
Yeah.
I got nothing.
Wow.
I got, I literally got nothing. So that is telling me, not only was that pressure gauge knocked out, but the communication was knocked out also, and the only thing it was reading was its final information, and it was stuck there. It was saying the power was fine, and it, and it didn't even know the pumps were running. So.
It like locked off?
Yeah, I mean.
Is that one of the old PLCs we're looking to replace, or is that a newer PLC?
No, that one is fairly new, I mean, it was, it's new when we put in the booster station, seven years ago.
Yeah, when the fairways, this occurred when the variable drives were being installed, and we're wondering if there's a correlation between installation of the VFDs, program of the VFDs and the scale, and this here.
Yeah, I didn't have any problem up until midnight, you know, at ten hours after they're gone. I don't know, I don't know if it was coincidental, I don't know, there's a lot of things, but I, I'm having, the electrician and Kemp and myself will all be there, because there's a couple of other things we have to do. Um, might as well talk about the storage tank too, as long as I'm doing that. I mean, because that was last weekend's, and this weekend, at eleven o'clock at night, um, I get a low pressure alarm, okay? And I'm like, oh God, here we go again. Now, that's, this is the storage tank, I come into town, I'm like, um, I look at it, and it's reading twelve feet in a storage tank. That isn't right. I climb up to the storage tank, and I look, and the thing's like, uh, running. So fill up the storage tank, make sure it's all running, and I'm, I'm figuring that the transducer had gone bad on it. Well, at the end of the day, there was a couple of other parts, there's, apparently, in one of our storms, see this lightning, restor, it's like a capacitor and a resistor? This was taken out, and the transducer was saved, but I didn't have the ability to change this over until the next day. So it's all, actually till this morning, it's all up and running, um, that part of it's fine. But it, like I said, I don't know, Brian, if this is all, if this was a commed thing, I don't know if this came from the electric, you know, from the lightning that we had, I mean, it smoked, so I'm, I'm believing this was storm damage, okay? But I was here, like, all weekend long, working with stuff, and then, um, we had a main break today, I don't think that, um, that was caused by, you know, anything, um, as far as pressure is concerned, because the area that we had the main break on was on Route 1, and we've probably had, my sixteen years of being here, probably at least fifteen to sixteen of them, right on Route 1 in front of Grove Street McDonald's. So that's what's been going on with your, um, well system in the last two weeks.
How do you count on the overflow to be removed? If all pumps are running for a duration? We were estimating, and it's, again, we're projecting, but we believe the power overflowed for a period of two to three hours, because where it flows, it's not easily known, unless an officer tries to down the alley. Um, so it's sixty thousand an hour, you probably need to hundred eighty thousand gallons to put it back.
See, the weird thing was, Brian, that it started and like, ran, and I'm looking at an historical log, and then it stopped at three o'clock, at like, two or three o'clock in the morning. Then it's got, then it went through the rotation, and it did it again. And then it went through a rotation and did it again. I mean, so the, the length of it, it running, it was substantial enough, you got to figure, at a minimum, it was running, um, filling that thing up at five hundred gallons per minute from the north end of town. To the overflow.
All right. Uh, thermoplastics cleaning project is complete, um, as we talked about when we decided to do this. Uh, this should last five years, we were painting every other year, the cost is about seventeen to twenty thousand. Uh, the thermoplastics, it was a cost of thirty thousand, so we should come out ahead, um, barring that this last five years. Um, I, I think it looks great, I think it's a definite improvement in looks and visibility and noticeability, um, versus painting when it's done. Anyone else have any thoughts on it?
Looks good. It's different than that other stuff we put down.
It's different than that other stuff we put down.
A lot better than the paintings.
Oh, yeah.
I concur. Restorations update. As everyone knows, all the snow plow damage, which we had a lot of, those restorations are complete. The Prairie Avenue restoration project is completed, except for the corner of Indiana and Prairie. Elm, is that finished?
That's done. The only corner over on Prairie is, I have to have the curb work done. So, I have curb work there, a little bit of asphalt, but all of the landscaping side, everything is done. Elm Street, weather permitting, every time he's supposed to come in, it's been pouring down rain, so. I mean, locates are all in over there, it's just a matter of having a window of opportunity.
And the same thing with Alpro?
And I, yes.
The weather issue?
Right.
The rain?
No, Alpro paving, they're, they're done.
They're done, that's.
Yes, they are.
That's done now? What about, are you gonna be doing that asphalt restoration on our Prairie in-house?
What, where we head to main break?
Yeah.
It's done.
That's done?
Yes.
So, it's just the curb?
Yes.
Uh, street name sign replacement program update. Works nearly completed.
I am, I would say that within the next couple of days, if it is not completed, it will be. They're getting very, very close, and the rest of the signs came in, the poles and stuff came in for the next phase today.
Just, just let you know, we had several inquiries as to why we don't have dry, plain, street, I don't know, sign. Even that, specifically Hunter's Drive, it just says Hunter's. Well, to be uniform across town, we wanted to do it that way, and some of those street names are so long.
Well, it was done like that from the beginning.
Contrary.
But each year.
Yeah.
I've heard nothing but compliments, Aron.
Okay.
I heard, I heard some people wonder why we didn't put dry, plain, street.
I heard nothing but compliments, everyone likes to. I'm gonna have you, your compliments, neither.
Buddy, all these are blue hair. There's a, new pole that went up? There's no sign on it, that part of the. Man, it looks brand new.
Where brand?
Is that right?
Long ear with blue hair.
That's not, that's not.
I don't think it's a new street sign, I mean, street pole, but I believe, but there's, the signs are new that are there.
No, no, no.
It's a regular place to pull there. There were four locations in Garden Creek.
That did not have a pole.
It did not have poles.
There's one.
Oh, oh.
That's because there's, that corner's not developed.
Right, on the corner, right next to the manhole str-? Yes, that's brand new pole.
There's one in Sunset Cold, and I can't remember the other four. There's four more.
MS four, stormwater discharge permit update. Most recent application we have just submitted is enclosed for your review. This is just a paperwork permit, creates many compliance timelines and work project schedules. This is our 10th year of this mandatory program. Water loss prevention program update. Buddy, you wanna give us an update on that as far as checking on calibrating the wells? The meters that we actually have on our wells?
I can tell you this, that I had Simpson in here today, and well four was, master meters were tested, was tested? No, excuse me, well, well three and well five, and I was having a lot of problems, so I pulled them off of, from doing well four today. I figured I didn't want any more headaches, and they'll come back probably next week or the following week, whatever convenient. I just wanna take care of first things first. But I can't give you the initial results, where that they were right on the numbers. So, with, as far as the other part of it, with our, our water to loss, I've been working with, with Donna. I mean, as far as going back and checking out changeovers and, you know, creating a list, so. I'm not sure when her next committee meeting is, but we'll have a lot of information to discuss.
Committee's modified water bill, appeal procedure now in place. We met on this. The committee has developed a new procedure for dealing with the customers who claim to have meters which have overread. Model has also been established to determine any amount of rebate which may be owed in the event the meter is determined to be overreading. The use of this model has been applied to two customers who had verifiable over, uh, overreading meters. And the committee has one appeal pending at this time, we're waiting the test results. All other requests to test of the meter have come back as accurate reads. So, we're dealing with this each one on a case by case. As it stated, there was two, we used this model, it worked great. You know, the, every, the residents were appreciative of it and understood it, and it worked out. The other ones, like you said, we have one that, excuse me, we do have one that we're waiting the results on, and we'll deal with that one as soon as it's done, and the others, the other requests of meters have come back as accurate reads, so. That's really it for my report.
So, we made contact with Simpson, got the final reports out?
I thought, well, when Chris was here today, I, I told him this, oh, I asked him specifically. The last I knew, you should be getting a letter in the mail as far as the, an explanation.
I can have it developed for you.
Bernard Welding sewage issue update. The engineering on the new pumping line is underway to determine project cost, and that's all the information we have at this point. The smartphone app went into full launch phase, and our committee met after the last village board meeting just to talk about some of the policies that would go into place for organizations to be able to post events and things in the calendar. We didn't wanna get into a situation where we're writing copy for other organizations, or, you know, where there's no way for people to be able to put their information in. So, it's in your packet, the rules we came up with. We're going to need to promote the smartphone app, and actually, I'm thinking about for the Fourth of July parade, my, we might be able to get a car decorated. I'm gonna work on this, see what I can do just to promote the app, put some things on the size of it, so. Nice audience, you've got a lot of people lined up on the parade route, but we'll see. Website overhaul update.
The design, we got preliminary design back from what, what foot, just overall look, nothing with content so far. Trusty Meyer and Donna, me and I, kind of looked at it, and kind of looked at the colors and what we like and what we don't like. We still need to kind of go into it a little bit more specifically. It's kind of the back part, and it's been crazy in the middle of the last couple of weeks, so, but we are still working on it.
Results of the intergovernmental meeting held May 30th, the main topic of discussion was TIF. And I guess we're going to discuss what we think of that for downtown.
As part of the downtown discussion, you wanna bring that up now? Or is that coming?
Your report?
Some of the presidents.
Okay. Later. We're considering a recommendation of the committee to establish incentives for new single-family housing construction. We worked on a recommendation for it as to whether or not we should reduce sewer and water tap-in fees, and we were, for discussion only, we were gonna kick around how that would work. I actually have a question. Are those lots for sale again?
They're kind of home. I don't know.
There, yeah, there's a new for sale sign over there. It's like they're listed again, and I, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know the multiple listing service.
There were two owners that bought them, one guy bought 12, and the other guy bought four. And I don't know where the, where does the sign at?
Right on the corner.
Maybe it's a 12.
It's a, yeah, it's a Remex sign. I just saw that pop up this weekend.
Could be news to me. Have they just sold?
Yep.
Like a couple ones?
Yeah, it would be hard to believe that they would just, it's not like they're gonna flip them for a whole bunch of money right now.
Is it the same location?
No, no, the other one was Bruce Hackle, I think, and this is La Ha, something L.A. H.A. You seen that name, Scott, it's something La Ha, yeah. Still Remex sign, but just a completely different broker. But in any case, we had been approached about potentially, initially, they wanted us to talk about rebating some money to the buyers to try to stimulate some, some purchases of these lots, and the attorney decided that that would not be legal. So, the best we could do is rebate to the developer and hope that he passes that on to the buyers, or at least give him some kind of incentive to be able to build to use up some of these lots.
Just remember, though, I think the discussion was, it wasn't only these lots, it's.
It would be any, yes, it would, it would not just be these lots. It would be basically anyone in town, it would be active for a period of 24 months, and it would only be for the first 50 building permits. After that, it would be closed down, or it would be up to us to determine if we wanted to continue that. Any thoughts?
Does the committee have a recommendation?
Um, we felt at the time that it would be a good idea to do this, to try to stimulate some building.
Yeah, what was that?
It was 50% of the sewer and water tap-in fees, not the car impact fees.
So, basically, I think the discussion was, you would gain 70, you would gain some, if the tank were to sell the first 50 lots in two years.
Because basically, if they're sitting there, we're getting nothing anyway.
But there's no impact to the water system. Right now, they're sitting there, and there's no impact to the water system. You tap into it? I mean, you, you, the impact fees are there for a reason, and that's why we had talked about that other building in the last meeting. It was, it's, we're deferring that impact until the resident that gets in there, the CO, the, the certificate of occupancy is then signed off, there's a plan, there will be impacts in the sewer system. Makes sense to defer. Now, we're cutting that value, you, we need to talk in more detail on our next meeting.
I agree, I, I, I understand what Marcy's trying to do, I'm all in favor of it. We just gotta figure it out.
By your way, make it like an.
Absolutely, because we are getting nothing for it, the way, the way it sits right now. Anything we can do to spur and encourage growth, you know, and, and getting these vacant lots filled, I think is a priority. I think it's something that every one of us pledged, campaign time, and have talked about for years, that we want smart growth, that one of the first things we wanna do is look to fill vacant lots. Incentivizing it, I think is a positive thing. I think we just gotta figure out where, where our true costs are and what those impacts are, and, you know. We, we need to look at it, I mean, this is really kind of the first that we've kind of seen of it, you know, when we got our packets and. It's a lot to digest, and it'd be good for the committee to discuss it further.
And if you have a different number, or, you know.
Let me ask you a question, is, is deferral an issue? I'm just wondering if we shouldn't get that, because it's not a decent referral.
To me, deferral's not an issue. I mean, there's no.
No, deferral doesn't, doesn't affect us at all.
There's, there's no.
My, my worry is the overall impact.
Yeah.
And right now, by cutting that fee in half, you're getting a sewer water impact, and you're getting hit by decreasing what we're deferring, what we're literally hitting the sewer system with. That's what worries me.
The deferral, the only issue was, was to make sure that we are able to catch the deferral, what an issue the CO, and afterwards, we discussed it with staff, and staff is 99 and 910 sure that that's not going to be an issue. So, I think the issue that Trusty Aaron had, we've been doing this for a while, it's never happened. That's not to say it can't happen, you know, but bottom line, the staff feels they have a check and balance in place so that we don't have to be concerned about that, if in fact we defer. And I would agree that deferral is, it's probably a given, so we'll make that off the books.
I think too, we have to look at, you know, the, the main headline here is about rebating to new homeowner. Is it going to a homeowner, or is it going to the builder?
The attorney, the attorney has said that that's not possible, so the only other recourse we have is any, any rebate that we have has to go back to the builder, hopefully the builder will then pass that on to the homeowner.
In his words, we can't play, ah, the guy's not here, who's the guy with the, Robert? We can't play Robert, we can't give the one, take the one and give to the one. We can't do that.
And the other thing that he mentioned, if you remember, the, the committee did discuss this, and we should've caught it right then. There was a concern that the committee, if I may.
Right.
I guess, I'm thinking his name. Anyway, there was a concern with the committee of where, if someone would have built a home, I'd have to add that it's amongst other homes. They didn't want to build a home that would fit in with that architecture at that particular point in time. It wasn't an architectural review, we just wanted to make sure that a home would fit in to those architectural, you know, I don't, I don't know how to describe it.
It's happened in the past, a brand new house is built in an, an older area of town.
The attorney reminded me that any type of architectural review is, can't do that. Yeah, we should've caught that when we had the discussion, but Trusty Meyer pointed out when I had a discussion with her next day, was in most of these cases, there are HOAs there, which those plans would have to be refused by the HOA, which the AO, HOA can't either approve or deny the architectural standard.
Which is a leak for townhomes, because that's, that's a big concern.
The annexation agreement is pretty clear on most properties. The one that, that were leaking is Prairie Crossing South, because that was a subdivision, strictly applied to subdivision, the annexation view, because that property is already listed. So, there is no annexation agreement, the covenants attached on Prairie Crossing South. So, that would be the one subdivision I would be concerned about, making sure that it formed to the architectural standards that the PCC approved in 2007. And that's where I think you'll have to be his problem.
And then, once again, I asked Bob, and if Bob at the inspector, would he be able to look at that, pay attention to that if in fact that was approved? And he said, yes, I can, we got that covered as well, that's possible.
Was Prairie Crossing South done as a PUD? I thought it was.
It was, but it was annexed as a PUD without a development agreement, and there are no specific architectural backgrounds in that something, other than the garden, there are for the garden, which there isn't for the second family. There's, there's testimony, there's letters, but not a legal binding issue, which got much. So, that's the one we have to watch.
So, further discussion for another day?
Well, I think you could pass a motion authorizing deferment fees for the first 50 units, or for a period of two years, whichever occurs first. Get that on the table, we'll draft an internal policy on that. But you did this once before, this is not been due?
You would only be deferring the village fees. And it would be, you would only be able to defer the village's fees.
That's correct.
Right.
And then you have to determine if you're gonna defer the fees for the inspector.
No.
Normally, we don't do that, because those are passing laws.
Right, the recommendation would be to charge them a building permit fee equally independent inspection, what they have to charge. So, we're not, if we, the taxpayers aren't out that money. The DAPN fees can be put until CO, and then you pay the DAPN fees before they give the CO. We're gonna put a flag on the CO so you know they won't go in the office, so those fees will be.
What about impact fees?
There are no impact fees as rule, part would not be waived, part would have to be paid upfront and fully, exactly. All we're talking about here is water and sewer.
There's water and sewer, that's all we're talking about.
Yeah, if, if the school district wants to defer the fee, that would be through the school district to build to not be involved in their work. That's what we've discussed before.
Do they pay those directly to the school district and to the fire district?
Yes, the fire district is paid in kind of reported, so the fire district out there, they're done, yes. The library district out there, most master gets his money from the busted box. Those are all paid in kind of prior.
So, it's us and the school?
Us and the school, and the school district is paid some. And again, same theory as Brian, you pay when the impact occurs. An empty subdivision's not producing kids, it's not a good burden on the school system. But you have to be careful with impact, the system law says it can only be for cash and move of land. So, it's really not a school impact fee, it's cash and move of land. The builder has already decided to waive his right to donate land to the school district for a school.
So, he signed up, he's also made it to pay a cash.
And it's what the school district is arguing, okay? He had a chance, he already deferred his obligation, I would defer him further. And that would be the argument of the school.
So, I will make a motion to defer sewer and water tap-in fees until the certificate of occupancy is issued for a period of 24 months, or the first 50 building permits for new housing, whichever occurs first.
Motion on the floor, that's your second, second. Any questions? Over call.
Clearing?
Yes.
Fire? Yes. Clear?
Yes.
Yes.
Clearly?
Yes.
And that is my report.
I have a question, I don't have it clear in my mind, what you want the committee or the board to do about the tap-in fees. Are you referring it back to committee? Is that what you prefer for discussion, or?
Well, I think.
Or works needs to talk.
Yeah, public works committee wants to talk about how it will impact them, and then our committee can talk again, maybe we can review or.
Absolutely, I mean, our, our meetings are all public.
My suggestion is.
If you're supposed to, because I can give input, and I'll sit down and work it together. Absolutely, yeah. Actually, this week, Friday, I finish up this job I'm on, and.
Back to normal days?
Huh?
Back to normal days?
No, still be nights, but I have like a two-week preview, possibly three. Our next job is starting either July 13th or July 20th.
Well, we have, we actually have one week to be, yeah, for.
Yeah, yeah. But I do have some time where, you know, my availability is, my availability, you know, for lack of a better term, is really bad.
No caller speed, you, for the second and third, you won't have.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll try to get some ironed out here next week or two, get a date ironed out.
That's my report.
And we got Expressway and South suburban airport, I don't know, we have any, new, it's gone tired, as far as I know. The, consider the ordinance, increasing the number of members of the beautification commission from eight to 12. But this basically boils down to is the women's club, as will take over the house walk that we traditionally have had for years within the village, and we'd like to see that carry on. In order for the village to carry on with the logistics that they do for that, the, there are four members that would like to be on the commission, so that would be part of the commission, they could get help from the commission, and at the same time, they could have the village's logistics, and that's the reason for the change from recent eight to 12. In fact, one, one member has attended the beautification, as the Leahson, we already, and she's actually indicated that she likes to plant flowers, which hopefully there's other volunteers, several volunteers, that can help with the beautification commission as well. But this, these four people, their primary task though is the house walk, and like you said, the women's club will be doing that.
I've heard the women's club's up there.
I heard the women's club's, uh, do you understand how many guys the women's club is?
Yes, they are, they are taking over.
Why wouldn't they increase the quantity of beautification?
Because they want.
House walks going.
They, they have a fear because of the logistics of the village helping them, as well as possible insurance, that they ask that they be included in the beautification commission. We talked about it over extensively, this discussion's actually been going on for probably about six months now. I know it was important, especially since the village was going to help out with logistics, I felt it was better that they just be a part of the commission, that it be a subcommittee. They understand that the funds would have to go through the, with treasure and everything, they understand that, they're agree with that, and they have no problem with it.
And you, you're going from eight to twelve?
Yes. When you get that party. So, you can make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Twelve, twelve.
I'll make a motion, um, ordinance number twelve. Increasing the number of members on the beautification commission from eight to twelve.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments besides twelve, twelve, twelve?
I, I think it's a great thing, I think it's a positive thing, more people, if you have one volunteer getting volunteered, I think.
Go call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, the appointments that I have, which I'm listening to the past page, I'll just go through the highlights. Trusty Aaron and trustee Capers are switching committees, so the public safety committee will, uh, consist of trustee Coleman and Aaron, uh, public buildings and factories, parks and recreation, trustee Waylon and trustee Capers. Uh, if you go down to planning and zoning, uh, Paul Coleman, Althea McNeves has agreed to stay on the commission, they don't want a previous term. Beautification commission, we've added the four members of the, uh, call it the house lock community, whatever you wanna call it, Melissa Olandorf, Jean Smith, Christine Coats, and Amy Smith. Fourth of July commission, Trish Moran, or Hodgson, uh, youth commission, Iz Dan, Arring, Stephanie.
This is, these are all like, this is like two years ago, I got like, there's one, two, three. The ones that are in Astro, that's, um, youth advisory, so they're not commissioned.
The one in the towers.
Exactly.
Uh, okay, I did not know that gentleman. So, Stephanie Solomon is advisory?
Yeah, it's actually Julian.
So, do you have twelve, because there's twelve on here?
Yeah, because you only have Ben Jones, Terry Caspitt, uh, those are their members, and then Brady Flores. Add those three to the list, and cross those three out, and Adam Howard and Joe Buller are no longer on it.
So, Dan Arring is advisory?
It's Zach.
Oh, Zach is on it.
Zach, yeah.
Where, Dan's his dad. Oh, I know, I thought he was on there, so Zach is advisory?
Yeah, these are kids.
All right, and who are the Terry Caspitts?
Brandy Flores and Ben Jones.
Wendy Flores?
Brandy.
Brandy? Who's the third?
Terry Caspitt and Ben Jones.
Howard, did we talk this with the court?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I should have got it to you. All right, everybody got straight? So, can I ask a motion for proof?
Second.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there was a second, any questions? Go call.
Larry?
Yes.
Meyer? Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Waylon?
As we discussed at the last board meeting, the, uh, heard rumor, whatever it was, about a landfill possibly at District 18 of County, possibly here along the proposed route of the Alien Expressway, and you approved a, a possible resolution, uh, opposing that, which was included in our packet, and I have a motion to approve that.
So.
Second.
The motion made, and there was a second, any questions or comments? Go call.
Waylon?
Yes.
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 Meyer? Yes.
Yes.
Resolution number?
Twenty fourteen oh nine.
Thank you, dear.
These kind of board meetings, we just resolved the issues about the antennas on the tower, if there's an engineering firm that's gonna be approval. Our engineers did agree with the current installation of the antennas on the tower, so that should be resolved. I just, proclamation, we have a request for an accessibility awareness week, which is also included in our packet. And can I have the, one, okay, this, that was included in the packet. Set us for the old downtown area, um, like I mentioned earlier, we've had recently a lot of inquiries about the old downtown area, which we've defined several meetings back. Basically, the one that we, we are dealing with, the gentleman's come before us, and basically, the Kenny, Kenny building?
Kenny building.
Kenny Insurance.
Kenny Insurance Building, and he'd like to put a restaurant in, he asked if we could do with any help with any fees that we would assess him, that he, if he came before the board, and those fees were listed there, uh, as I remember eight. My opinion is, though, if you were to agree to anything down there, it should be in that entire area, which I would entirely agree with, that the next possibility is that it's something going down there. And like you said, you know, three, three businesses that are, have good possibilities of being created right now. And what I'd like to do is if, if the board can just come to a consensus, yeah, we agree with that, then it'll come up with a plan of what would possibly, you know, maybe refer to the committee and have them come up to the recommendation, which this would be, Marcy, ready as well?
I would see Marcy.
But possibly, at your combined meeting, that you have come up, maybe you can talk about it there.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know.
The only thing.
These, these fees that you're talking about, anything to do with water tap-in or sewer tap-in, so.
And it's all based on construction.
Yeah.
Unless you wanna make a recommendation now, and then at the next meeting.
There are a few buildings down there that don't have water and sewer.
Like, well, huh.
Yeah, so if he comes in, are you gonna charge him a tapping fee? I would say in that little area, no, that it's paid taxes for a hundred and fifty years. Not water and sewer in those buildings, you're not gonna be using it forever.
They were running off the well.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we're gonna discuss, but I, I think this is a good thing, I mean, you're talking about using the parameters that we established, our, our, what area?
Downtown is.
Streets to street, what is downtown?
That is correct, and I just don't feel it should apply to one, one area, one building, it should be that area.
Yeah, it's gotta be the entire area.
Yeah, and just for one more, just so we can point out one, one question now, so that we can have that answer by the time we get to your meeting, is the only one that Bob seems to have a, a, a problem with, an issue with, is the waiving of the zoning if for anybody that has a special use of the fee. And just to mention, his wife, he can speak for himself, is that, not everybody's gonna have a special use, it's only gonna apply to that as one area, and just so happens, this one business that's discussing this with us, he already knows he wants a special use for it, but that doesn't mean the next building is gonna want one, so it doesn't apply to everybody, it only applies to somebody that has a special, a special need. Am I correct, basically?
Yeah, if you offer waivers of a special use permit, I'm gonna tell you, we spent many, many meetings at nauseam discussing that seven fifty. It's gotta be based on geography, you just can't say, this guy, we're not gonna charge, or this guy, we're gonna charge. I think it has to be geographic square, it's, okay, in this square, we're not gonna charge these fees, because it's geography-based, it's not discriminatory. You start waiving fees for special use permits, someone could argue that that's discriminatory thing. So, you wanna make sure that, that it's based on geography, not based on, yeah, we hope this business makes it, so we're gonna consider special use, and we'll, we'll charge, that's dangerous. You want, you wanna base it on geography.
Isn't that what we're doing, when we're talking about the downtown area?
Yeah, we did establish specifically that area.
But the difference is, it's, it's, it's the special use part of it, it has nothing to do, you know, if the guy goes back and reuses that building the way it is now, not needing a special use, where's, where's his incentive? He's gotta go after whatever he's gonna do in a special use.
It's only, it's only unique to that one building, it's not to all the buildings. And I'm not suggesting we do or don't do it, it's just that if there was a question, that was very silly, we didn't think.
The other fees are, are blind to the use of the building. Special use is directly impacted by what they're planning and doing, and not everybody's gonna do any, not everybody will, will meet the requirements of special use, and that's why it becomes a problem. I think if you've got a special use, you know you're gonna have to deal with that. The others are blind fees, that it makes sense to incentivize that downtown area.
I, I will say, if you, if you agree to a free building permit, there will be costs to the village to pay independent inspectors to do that. I don't have a problem with that, if you're trying to get the downtown to do it, but I have a duty to tell you that there is an expense to the village if you go to do it.
And depending on what they do to the buildings, and some of those buildings need a lot of work, that could be a lot of work.
Another thing too, you know, they have liquor license here, you're not gonna give that to every, do we have a certain number of liquor licenses that we establish every?
Yeah, there is one available for this individual, that is a good point, not necessarily everybody would have a, a liquor license.
Right.
Is the ambulance in serious?
No, well, well, yeah, it is, it's, it's on.
But if they were paying for theirs for years, does that mean they need a free one?
No, it would be, it would be a first new road.
And a new license.
Yeah, and, and remember, these, this is only a one-time thing, so the liquor, even though the liquor license.
Oh, it's only for one year.
Yeah, even though the liquor license recurs, it's only the first year.
Oh.
Okay, and, and that, at least that's my thoughts.
And then you have to think of, do you wanna expand the number of licenses that you give? If somebody else wants to put a restaurant down there.
He, that has to come back to the board and bring that.
That won't be a problem, vote on it.
Right.
There's a few.
And I believe that's by ordinance anyways, and how, right about there.
And the other thing that's on here is also business case, and those would also be for the first year.
I will tell you though, that the one business is encouraging freely fund the seven fifty for the zone, so that needs to be discussed at length, um, and he's in a hurry, but.
He would still have to come forward though.
Yeah, he's got to go through the process.
Okay.
Yes, we're not leaving any processes, we're not, any appeals or anything like that, the process is still in place, it's just a fee, so.
I, I don't have a problem with the special use permit required as long as it's also tied to chat. Because it's always been a sensitive issue. You say in this two-block area, we're gonna waive any special use permit required fees, you can do that as long as it's tied to that specific requirement.
For business.
For business, yeah, well, that's another thing, if you request a special use for something that's very unzireable, but I guess it doesn't matter what the fee is, you can tell them, hey, come over, you know, you're still processing, it's still denied a special use.
But you have more than a two-block area, it is established where those, that area is. It is established.
Yep.
Gold or Reed, from Penfield to Hedges, Penfield from Gold to Woodward.
Any business, so if a guy comes in and wants a special use for a residential on the first floor, that would not apply.
Right.
We've had that before too.
Okay, thinking counts on? Uh, I'd like to have a motion for a closed session to discuss personnel and litigation. Uh, no action will be required after the meeting.
Do we need to vote on this in center?
I think you're right.
Call the committee, come on in.
Okay. All right.
I just want to make sure we're gone.
My understanding is going to, you can make with a recommendation.
Okay. This, this guy.
So. Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, second, go into executive session.
If this guy comes and sees me tomorrow, do I call him to refer to the committee?
Yep.
And he says, well, I want my permit next week, why would I call him there?
If he wants to read, if he wants to make any sense, he's gotta, he's gotta wait till the committee makes a recommendation, he would inform that.
Okay, got you. July maybe?
Or July maybe?
When is there July maybe?
July fourteenth.
Okay, once again, there's a motion on the floor, second, go into the second session, discuss personnel and litigation, go call.
I made a motion, second.
I made a motion.
I said it.
Our dinner.
Larry?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
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 What do you concede for pending litigation?